Great, good evening. I want to call the Board of Selectment meeting for May 27, 2025, order at 6:31 PM. First on the agenda is the Secretary's report, approval of minutes. I realized I never filed the minutes from May 21st. That was our meeting about the MS4.
I have two minor corrections from May 13th and would like to move to approve. First, I'll move to approve May 19th minutes as stated.
You want a second?
Yeah, I'll second. That's just after the meeting.
Alright, so then, these are minor. On May 13th, Item 3, second bullet point, it should be biased, B-I-A-S-E-D. Biased. Biased. And then, on item 7, Allison's name is, last name is spelled K-A-R-A-M. So with those changes, I make the motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 13th.
I'll second it with the corrections.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, May 19th is approved in that same motion, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And really, the May 21st, even though the minutes weren't posted, we're discussing it on Item 6 tonight, so just to follow, right? The MS4 is what the meeting was about, so.
We'll do it next time. Nothing earth shaking in the base, I imagine.
Okay, sorry, taking notes. First, audience of citizens. Looks like we have three people here with us, two videographers. Anybody online? Don't see any. Anyone like to address the board at this time? Be careful of your head, you're right at that door. That door's a killer. No online folks. Is that true? No online folks.
Carol, is the board aware of the situation today?
I have told the board yet.
Officer Foytow resigned as of today.
Didn't quite hear me.
Officer Foytow has resigned as of today. Just give me an update on that.
Okay. He did a wonderful job when he was here, I thought. It's too bad.
Yeah, it was too bad for the town. He was well-liked.
Yeah.
Good community police officer.
Any people wish him well, where he's going or anywhere, or just get your presentation?
Resigned.
So we wish him luck.
Thank you.
It's too bad. Okay, anyone else? Audience assists? Excuse me. Okay. Appointments. So we have two appointments tonight. We have Catherine Kelly. Is it Catherine?
Catherine, spelled the right way.
And Mike Joya for Municipal Veterans Representative and Kathleen, Catherine Kelly, for Economic Development Commission, term to expire 12/1/2026.
Let's take them separately.
Okay.
I had an opportunity to talk, she goes by Kate.
Okay.
I think she brings a lot and a lot of energy, a lot of skills and enthusiasm, and would be a good addition to Economic Development Committee. So I move that we approve the appointment of Catherine Kelly to EDC.
I'll second it, but I will abstain because I did not speak to her, but I follow your ladies, so I'm good. I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, now, discussion. You always discuss after your motion.
I'll have to get on top of that. So for discussion, I think she'd be a great addition to it.
So we played a little telephone tag and I've heard other folks that knew, know of her, said that she'd be a great addition, and Stacy, the Chair of EDC, is very excited for that appointment, so I'm fine with that, too. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
He's abstaining.
That's right, so 2-0, one abstention.
Only because I didn't speak to her, so I mean, that's, if Stacy's good with her, then I'm good with her. You know, the Board Chair people should have some weight on the side, so I'm good.
Yeah, okay. And now, the second appointment is for our Municipal Veteran Representative. And so what happened there is the state asks, it's required to have, oh, you're upstairs.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. There's actually another meeting going on tonight, Zoning Board of Appeals, and they're upstairs. But basically, the state requires all municipalities to have a Veterans Representative, and it's really the first point of contact for any local veterans that might need assistance with just knowing where to, how to maneuver through the system, get services, and that sort of thing. And our former was Joyce Paradas, so thank you for her service, but actually, when she left the town, we were in a position where we needed to find a new representative. So I did reach out to both of the local veterans groups, talked to Bill Burdick and Rich Naggett, and they thought about it and decided it should be someone younger, and referred me to Mike Joya, who's been coming to all the Board of Selectment meetings. Mike agreed to do this and has reached out to the state himself and has already been participating in, I know you did the Stand Down and those kind of things already, the veterans in New Britain, Newington, so thank you. So Mike has agreed to do this, and I don't know if it's a term, do you remember the term? Is it until a new person's appointed, correct?
Until he says stop.
So, right, so he can be reappointed or somebody new appointed if we decide Mike's not.
So is it annual or is it in perpetuity until he steps down?
It's in perpetuity until he steps down. Or the state tells us he's not fulfilling his duties, then we would replace.
Not that, I'm just curious, do you have to be a veteran to serve on this?
They recommended to someone that was a veteran.
No, just because when Joyce was, that's all I'm asking, you know? I mean, Mike's, I have no problem.
Well, Joyce did it because her son was serving, so I think she had the commonality there.
The connection, okay.
But the state did say they prefer a veteran because, again, somebody that's kind of walked in their shoes. If somebody's having issues and maybe that veteran has already found his way through the system himself, so then he can help the next person line, so.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Joya, the young fellow, to Municipal Veterans Representative.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
I would like just to touch a discussion, though, on this. I also reached out to the few of the veteran folk and the American Legion people, and Mike did receive a glowing review and recommendation for this. I was surprised, though, to understand that he's already, his name is already up there, enlisted at the state, and the process of how this came about is a little concerning, and I hope going forward that we will be engaged in thinking and discussion before it comes to this. Terrific choice, fully endorse him, just the process needs a little improvement.
I guess I wasn't aware that he had to be officially appointed at a Board of Selectment meeting, and then again, since Mike was already, jumped right in, two feet kind of thing, he reached out to the state and that's how the name got changed. It was not through my office, and I saw it as well, and his name was already there, so.
I mean, what if he wasn't? His wonderfulness.
So did we not have a representative since George left?
We hadn't for a number of months until Mike stepped up.
Okay.
And like I said, I didn't know it was an official appointment, but they do have annual training that they say is mandatory, only offered once a year in June. So we missed it last year because we didn't have a candidate, so that's why I said, oh, if we have to make it official. But I agree with Catherine, I went on the state, Mike's name's already on there, so I said, well.
Thank you.
Would you like to address the board? Tell us.
The board, we're invited to the training. Now, the official point, all the way to sign up to attend the training. So I have new contact with the state, point of contact, John Carrigan, met him when I shared the Stand Down, talked to him in person, so you're going to understand what the duties and rules and responsibilities are for the position. Made contact with the local VA rep, the VA rep that controls our area, so I got a couple contacts already established, so we should be, should be good to go for moving forward. And like I said, it's just a, positions on the first point of contact to try to reach out to help everybody navigate the treacherous areas of, you know, that's available for veterans, through the state and through the fact that VA, and then just simple things like even getting a free ride to medical places, stuff.
How will we let them know that you're not here for them? Is there a way, is there a newsletter or is there any other publications for that? All the veterans from law, I think we have, what, 115, 180?
180.
180 veterans. So for the, so the state Department Veterans Affairs does have a point contact list. You go in there, enter the town, and it'll come up with, it'll be my name, and then it'll be at Norwich, the official office at Norwich will be the second contact. So even if there's not a appointed person for a town, they have to jump to the local office, which for our town is Norwich, is just where they cut the lines and stay, so. You think it'd be Rocky Hill, boy.
But I bet I will officially put it in the newsletter now. I looked at old newsletters and there was a couple weeks where I said, one of, has a vacancy, like we're looking for a Municipal Veterans Representative, and at that time, I think Bill Burdick had said, oh, let me think about it and see what's involved, maybe I'll split the role with somebody, and we were trying to come up with them. But because of the training and then there was a lot of online things, too, and he thought maybe a little technical would be better for maybe a younger person, you know, so.
Well, maybe.
So I can now follow up and say, we've appointed somebody and this is our person that we put up.
Maybe every couple of months, you and Mike can get together and he can give back any feedback that he's had, and you can put that in your newsletter. Like I said yesterday, 188 veterans, and what was there yesterday? 15? So there's a lot of people there that aren't.
Yeah, that will not reach.
That aren't reaching out, so maybe between you two, you put something in your newsletter. And just, you know, a little brief.
Yeah, good idea. Or if you have any ideas to help us get the word out.
Yeah, I can get a couple of emails from the state monthly with, you know, some good information, so I'll start passing it to Carol to, you know, try and include in the weekly email what I feel is appropriate to be sent out to the, from Carol, to be sent to the veterans.
Sounds good. Should do the vote.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Gates, second by Russell, discussion, so all in favor of appointing Mike?
Aye.
Okay. Michael Joya, what's your middle initial?
F.
F, Michael, F. We'll be all official.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, town-owned vacant land sales. So the legal notice has been published, you both got to lay eyes on it last week at the MS4 meeting. That went out to the paper, it should be in this week's Valley Courier, and then it'll get posted on the website. I thought we'd wait until it was out on Thursday, put on the website. And then, anyone interested in making a bid on those, it'll be by sealed bid. The bids are due to the First Selectmen's Office by Wednesday, the 18th, at 11:30 AM, and then at 12 o'clock, we will open the sealed bids. So if anyone's interested, please get them in. If there's any questions, or if you want to, it's up to the people bidding to do their due diligence. So I would say, reach out to zoning, you know, planning and zoning, building department, whatever, to make sure you get more information before you put your bid in.
Long process.
Yeah, so that was that.
Good.
MS4, so we had a meeting last week, and we did review the report with our Jacobson Representative, Wade Thomas, just lost it. And also, Tony from Planning and Zoning was here, DPW Eric was here from DPW, so we had all the groups represented, had a nice discussion, and I guess our takeaway was that we were going to maybe form a committee to kind of keep up on this, and then meet in September, so maybe meet quarterly, was it, or just at least twice a year?
I think somewhere between three and four times a year.
So that'll be something the selectmen will be, you know, moving forward with, coming up with, who we want on the committee, how many people, what their background should be, that sort of thing, but anybody that's environmental or has stormwater management experience, or an engineer that wants to think about this, that watches our Board of Selectment meetings, please keep that in mind if you're looking for a volunteer opportunity, that might be the perfect fit for you to review. So the MS4 is a stormwater management report that's done yearly, and it talks about just different things with the town. They do water sampling, we look at the discharge from the stormwater catch basins, that sort of thing, so might be a perfect, up somebody's alley, right, to do that. Resource lighting and electric charging stations. So I really didn't do much more of a follow-up. I did reach out to the town of Sterling and the town of Plainfield, that both have the electric chargers by resource lighting, and they all had nothing but positive things. They think the residents love them, they do receive a check, one of them has already has paid back, but they entered into the same arrangement that Deep River was considering, where we kind of do that. Lost the word of what that was, how are we going to do that?
We split, so whatever the amount was, we split the revenues till we paid off.
Right. Forget the, just, oh, cost share, I guess it was a cost share, right. And the other towns have all entered into the agreement and it's worked out fine for them. They didn't tell me how long they'd been in the agreement, but one of them had said, oh, we got a check for, you know, $80, got a check for $40, you know, so it seemed to be going well.
So I had several thoughts on this. Few things that I don't think we've looked at are, what is the demand right now in Deep River? And what is the usage of the current charging station? And I know that's a bit challenging because the records can't be found on that, is that, that's what I understand.
Yeah, so we did, we did try to find that information, you're right, so when you say we didn't have it looked into it.
No, 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 you couldn't find them.
We could find, well, Eversource, at this point, the bills all seem to be, so it's at, currently, we have our only electrical stations are at the electric charging stations at the library. That seems to be Eversource, the bill for 100, is it 150 main? Is that the?
Yes, yes.
Just seems to be looped, lumped together, so you really can't distinguish, and I don't know how you figure out how many.
But the user's paying it. The user, the charger, the person charging their vehicle pays for it, so I don't know how we would track that unless, you know, the company, so.
Well, let me, I just need to give you one second. So what we've learned from Sterling or Plainfield is that they're receiving checks. That's not what we currently receive here, correct?
That's correct. So we don't get anything from the charging stations we have, whoever set them up, or some company. I did find that they're out of New London, that company, so I am still trying to, maybe I can track down.
So it'd be easier to track the new people, because you're going to be getting a check every month, if you do, you know, have enough people using it, where right now, we have no idea if we're making money, losing money, whatever, you know, so that's my only concern is, I want to see facts, I want to see what, you know, but there's no way to track it. You know, and the usage, do we, do we have enough people and the demand?
Well, see, that was the question, my question on demand. I agree with you on that, Dwayne. I did, this is not remotely quantitative, but I did talk to several residents, you know, a few I knew who had electric vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, and the response was mixed, and this is not at all quantitative, but it seems to be that people right now are privatizing them, they're putting their own charger in their own home. One person who has been driving electric vehicle for a couple of years said that he charges, he wants, he uses the high-speed charge up on I-95, he said he would have no interest in going to the library. So I don't know, I spoke to another person who does, is a big builder, and says they are putting them in, where he's putting in buildings, but it's when they have apartments of 200, 300 apartments, so it's just part of the future. I don't know how much demand we have here, I think we should measure that, try to measure that to some degree. And also, and just a couple of things on the three sites. If we were going to do it, I think it should be at the library. Plattwood, as I think we talked a bit about this a couple of weeks ago, we've got the problem of the pass, and that gets complicated. Do we need devets in the library? Again, I don't know demand, so if we have the library, if we're thinking of doing it, my preference at this point would be to just do the library. That being said, though, on this, we don't know how much is going to be used, and the library, if our cost share of this is $5,500, if, if we're getting $30 a month, it would be paid back in 15 years. So we would start seeing revenue in 15 years. I don't know.
Well, we'd see 100% revenue in 15.
100% revenue. Up to then, we're paying back for our share of their building this and installing it for us.
Well, it's, it's another way to boost, you know, economic development in a way. Like if you have an electric car, you're going to go somewhere where you can charge it. Having it at debit, you know, we have a lot of people that go there for baseball games, maybe they park and they go over to Dunkin', or they go to Deep River Home, or the herbarie there, or something, and maybe walk into downtown because their car's charging, or they're at the library and they walk, you know.
It's conceptual, we just don't have any idea the demand.
Right, but it's just a service for our residents, too, but.
I mean, I like the idea, it's just, I don't want to be on the hook for money that we really don't, I mean, I go and what's Catherine's map there, oh, thank you.
Or help us.
But just say, 15 years, they'll probably be obsolete and they'll have to change email costs, and then we're just going to keep stretching that lease or whatever payment out, that's all that I'm concerned about. If these other towns said that they were getting checks, $150, $200 a month, I'd say, let's go.
But they paid it off already.
But they're bigger towns. No, they didn't, they didn't say they did.
Oh, they have not?
They're just.
But we don't get money till after it's paid off, is my understanding.
Correct.
Our share goes, so we wouldn't see money for 15 years, so they must have paid theirs off if they're seeing it, unless it's 15, unless they're $30 a month.
Cut the revenue every month or something until it's, I thought they took half of it every month.
I.
You guys are upstairs. Is that okay?
We're meeting in a small conference room.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just wanted with the tape recorder, so.
Oh, the tape recorder's in this closet.
Oh, you're not using it?
No, we're getting recorded, so we're live in Memorex or whatever, I mean, like we're live and you guys are Memorex with the tape. But it's in that closet. Do you want me to grab it, or you can grab it, I'm talking.
So that's one thing that my concern is, like I said, I like the idea to give our residents the service, but how much are we going to utilize that service? That's my one concern.
Well, he did mention that we could enter into this agreement and then cancel, what, within 30 days? And the rebates are only good, they're only giving out so many rebates, so the longer we take to decide, then the rebates might be gone.
I would not rush into it for that reason. One of the bills just passed in the state, they're putting, our state is putting 80, additional 80 million into charging stations. I don't think this is our one shot only, I'd like us to figure out the demand and really figure out what we're doing.
I just wish it was a way that we could track.
Well, I'll keep looking into it, I just, I put it on there because you had said, is this going to be a follow-up on our, this meeting, and then I didn't really get a chance to get more information, so.
I mean, could the library even track it? Is there any way, I mean, they've got all those cameras, could we just take a look to see how many times it's being used?
I don't know if they have a camera in the back, do they?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Okay, so we.
Even if we start digging into the bills, the electric bill for, we've got to show some sort of credit on the bill if we're getting anything.
We may not be getting a credit.
Yeah. All right, well, let's table this, then, we can talk about it later. And then Jones will get more information, here's that.
Back to Jones.
Well, maybe I can do a survey in my newsletter to say, what do people think, or something? I don't know, maybe the people that have electric cars read the newsletter.
Is there any tracking through our Cessar's office of type of vehicle? You could have a sense of that.
That's not a bad idea, they must, they must have stuff like that.
That's a thought.
Well, it could be, what happens if you have a hybrid? You know, car that's electric and.
All right, so Jones will.
It may not show on a tax form, I don't know, I don't know how they track it.
Okay, I put this request from Estuary on here again, only because we want to bring that to the Board of Finance. I reached out to the Estuary, I have a little note that I called, and I don't think I got a call back, so I do not know. You had asked how many other towns have given the money, so.
So we're going to move it to.
That's an unknown. I will talk to the Board of Finance, I mean, I'll mention it today, just to see what the reception is on that.
I did have a thought on this. Wasn't it 2,500 per town?
I brought the.
I think it was 2,500 per town.
2,500 for each of the nine towns.
You know, Carol, I was thinking a little bit more about this and about it doing. As opposed to taking it out of a surplus or something, as we just got into the budget cycle, do you think it might be written up in the newsletter with a suggestion and there'd be donations? I mean, some people may actually have a particular feeling for feeding the elderly and the housebound, and may want to make a check, anything that would take a little off of a total that would go to the town. It's a thought.
Well, how about even approaching the Community Health Committee?
I, I chatted with one of their members and they said, yes, bring it to us.
Okay, so that might be something. I mean, we'll talk to the Board of Finance and then I can bring it to them, too, and then maybe the Estuary will get back to me. I know with the holiday, you know, they probably got a little busy. Town budget vote, so referendum is tonight, for those watching, of course, I hope you have gone out to vote because you'll watch on whenever this comes out, but 12th date today. Neighborhood Assistance Grant, we have Tri-Town Youth Services, Rob Viviani here to talk to us about that.
Yes, I want, as Carol put me on the agenda so that I could talk about getting approval to proceed with the Neighborhood Assistance Grant to create a giving garden over at the building on 56th High Street, a much smaller version of what has been previously approved and still envisioned for the town, a community garden. This would be a giving garden that would be supervised by staff in Tri-Town who would supervise middle and lower.
What's the attitude of that?
High school students.
Please, it's important for a ring recorder, thank you.
Who would then also be mentoring elementary school students, and the produce from the garden would be given to the food pantry, so that those were sending to the food pantry during the summer and now probably the fall, would have fresh vegetables in addition to whatever, only from the pantry, and so. In, as you may know, applying for these grants, the town where whatever you're doing is happening, has to approve it, so has, you have to prove it, apparently going to a town meeting, which then the town has to approve going forward. Just in case you're interested, the price would, what we're looking for from the state in the, in the grant would be just shy of, or right about up to $5,000.
Is this going to be raised bed garden?
Raised bed, yes.
So that'll be a nice, if we were to get a nice investment, you could, you'd have the infrastructure built for future use.
Well, yeah, so on the Carol's end, we could even incorporate it into whatever may come down the line in terms of the community garden that's been busy in there, but it's a pretty small unit that could be easily incorporated into, put something larger.
And Rob, it showed me a picture, well, Abby had sent it over, so it's a self-contained kind of raised beds, I think there's two, and then it's got like a little built-in, like a fence, so you'd walk in, almost like a little self-contained garden, so the fence is built in around the top of the beds. But I was saying to Rob, so what we had planned there was something about like a 40 by 40, like a very big thing, but even maybe if we just got a bunch of those units down the road and keep adding on, then we can get the larger, and then everybody has their own, like little space, you know, for a community garden, but, but they're thinking, and Abby's reaching out, what, youth, you know, teens or kids.
She's already got those signed up, who are signed up. We already have the materials for the garden, so the sense of what I'm looking to do is get this grant to reimburse us, and then, of course, whatever money we're using from our operating account, but then those other programs and services.
I think it's a good idea.
I do, too. So I move that we approve the request from Tri-Town for their community garden, to make this request for the Giving Garden for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. this a request for the Giving Garden for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, any more discussion?
The only thing is, we gotta get to a town meeting, because you gotta get this garden planted, all right?
Yeah.
The longer we wait, the window closes, so, we have a town meeting next week, or following?
I haven't planned it yet, but we were talking about kind of mid-June, but I can notice it, and I'll send you guys some dates, we can check our calendars, and then we'll put the notice out there.
Okay. Just for the record, in that we're actually seeking reimbursement, that we have approval, we could start the garden now. If we get the reimbursement, we get it, great, and if we don't, we don't, we want to do it anyway.
Okay. I just, I know the timeline.
No, we're a little behind on what we want, but fortunately, the weather didn't cooperate, I guess.
It's been helpful.
It's pushed everything back a little, so we would like to be able to proceed, and Carol and Abby and I are working that out, but.
Good.
When is, is there a town meeting already scheduled for that other request?
There is not. We were kind of waiting on yours, and then we had talked about kind of mid-June, so we just haven't put it on the books yet, but the other selectman and I will come up with a date, and then I'll text you to make sure it works with you, and then we'll advertise it.
All right, great.
Typically, we've had the people asking for the grants to be at the, so we'll have Allison there as well, in case the public that shows up to vote wants to know more about the projects or whatever, so.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Great, thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so all in favor?
I...
All right, library space issues. So we had, we have some issues at the library with, you know, we just don't have enough space in the town for all our great things that we want to do. The registrars have to use their space as the community room. Librarians have some storage issues. So you guys had a chance to go over and have kind of an action meeting, fact gathering.
It was a good hands-on, eyes on the problem, and both sides speaking about their issues, et cetera, et cetera, and we did identify three areas that we believe should have further inspection, to figure out what can we do. Two were short-term, medium-sized solution, and the third one, if possible, would actually solve the problem. So I believe you're...
I'm meeting with the building inspector, Mr. Layton, tomorrow at 1:00.
Okay.
Go over and take a look.
And then you guys will have a little more firm. And then, when is the next library board meet?
I believe it's the first of June, you know, the first week or so.
Is it the first Monday?
First Monday of June.
Is it the second? I can't remember which it is.
So it's coming up, whatever you and Dick, you know, some of the solutions or those options, will, the board will have another discussion with the board?
I believe they meet before we meet, our selectmen's meeting.
You can check it on the website, just get a look at that.
But the problem being is, you got two parties there that we have to, both Catherine and myself emphasize that, we have to work together here, and we have to find common ground here, somewhere. And we identified some areas that we can satisfy the short-term needs, and hopefully we can get it done.
And, you know, the challenge of this is, is that for the registrars, this is state law, a requirement, they don't have much wiggle room there. And as far as the librarian goes, you know, there's a fair amount of equipment, and you can't expect someone to really be carrying all this stuff up and down all the time. So we did look at one area where there were some cabinets, and that could take up a piece of the storage by where the sink is. Another area where you're going to the back, to the great deep unknown there. But there was a nice area that Dwayne visualized, could have some doors put on, and some shelving put in, and candidly, it's kind of a mess back there now. And then there's a third area, if you could go through that wall in the main community room, next to where the veterans are, that could be a complete solution, which would be terrific. And in the process of that, we identified, there was a bunch of trash bags sitting around, and we actually identified a solution potential. Visually, we could see how that could be moved and contained. They're just so tight for space, for every function they're doing there.
Yeah, that seems to be a problem all over the town.
But it made a big difference to actually be on-site, look at it, and I think there was a slight optimism on both parties, because they thought there was going to possibly be some action. So tomorrow would be great, with what you find out with...
So then you'll come back?
I'll let you guys know. I won't give an intel report like Catherine's, but I'll do my best.
It's just a memo with four bullet points.
I'll do my best. I'm more of a verbal guy.
But then, does the board, so then we should vote on what the move, the action is gonna be at the next selectman meeting, or do we have a special meeting to decide?
We might, we may need a special meeting, we've gotta get moving on this.
Yes, we gotta get moving.
You know, it's a point of contention right now, for every...
Your sun gets damaged, and then...
And it's been for weeks, because the new tabulators got delivered, and, yeah, there's just no room for the new tabulators, right?
The only thing, I saw, I'm looking for that sheet of paper today, a report that had gone to you from Dick Layton in March, I don't know that I got a copy, one of the registrars gave me a copy today when I went to vote, and Dick is saying, "If we do work down there, we're gonna need to retest for asbestos disturbance." So we just have to keep that in mind, because it passed the test when this was done in March.
But where we're looking at, asbestos won't be damaged, it won't be touched. On any of the ideas that I...
Yeah, well, there is an asbestos containment materials maintenance plan over there, so we, you know, whoever works over there has to follow the protocol that's already been established. You know, we had a company come out and do that for all our, the town hall and the library, so anyone that does work there needs to sign that, they've read the report, and they won't disturb anything that's there, which I think was identified as floor tile. Is there any pipe insulation left over there? That's all been removed, right?
The pipe insulation, we wouldn't be near, near that area.
Because you're not back in the furnace room. So I don't think there should be any disturbance, but absolutely, we have to follow the protocol.
But that's why I'm meeting with Dick tomorrow, Dick can spell out what has to be done, or what can be done, what can we do, what we can't do.
So if we need a special meeting, let's do it, and get on it, and move it. The goal, I think, is quickly on the short-term ones, but to have the longer-term one up and running by early October, at least by early October, is, would be helpful to the registrars.
By early October?
To all parties, actually.
Because of the fall election?
Yes, then they'll be...
There's not a primary in August they're worried about? Usually a primary.
We talked about early October.
Okay, October was their thing?
Yeah, sooner if possible.
The only thing is, that's pushing, Catherine, because I understand what you're saying, but if we do the long-term one there, you know, that's a little bit more money.
We have to get the facts, right? We don't know what we're talking about.
I just don't want to put a date down on that, and then say, "Oh, hey, we said we're gonna have it done by October."
So ultimately, we would like it done by early October.
Yeah, the short term, I don't see why it can't be done within a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But the short term won't solve the whole problem, so...
Right, but maybe that's the first step.
But let's keep the motion going.
Half the pie is better than no pie.
I just want a slice, just a slice. Okay.
All right, second audience is citizens. Well, thank you for having that meeting, too.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry I wasn't able to go.
Fact-finding.
The school, fact-finding.
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 Fact-gathering, get-together, yes. Because no action was taken, you're absolutely right. Okay. Audience is citizens, second one. Hi, Tim, you've joined us.
Good.
Thank you. Now I've gotta change my numbers, four people. All right, so White Moon Report, I had some stuff, and I forgot what it was, but one of the things was, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out yesterday, Memorial Day, it was just wonderful to see, we were blessed, and just enjoyed our youth of the community. The Valley and John Winthrop bands were amazing, the Tico River Luntree School was amazing, that band, so great to see the kids march and fight and drum, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, we had a really good group, it was really a wonderful parade, and so was the one in Winthrop on Sunday, so thank you. I want to thank Emily Minor, she works for Valley Shore Community Television, Public Access Coordinator, and she was here recording the parade, and I just wanted, she sent me this, we can watch it on our local cable, tonight at 9:00, it'll be on, tomorrow morning at 8:00, and tomorrow at 4:00, and then there's a couple other dates, so please go on to the Valley Shore, well, let's see, it's Cablecast Public Site, but VSC TV, but it's on there, and it stays on there, when she puts the link up there, so everybody can watch. I want to thank our police, kept everybody safe, the fire police, the fire department, you guys were amazing. We did have some of our people attending the parade, that did seem to be overcome by the heat, or just standing, it was a very long ceremony, a wonderful ceremony, but, so thank you for first responders, they were right there to help. And who else am I forgetting, anyone else that we want to thank?
Oh, and the Speaker, Rob, Major Rob Palumbo, was just terrific, inspiring.
He was, very good, and Jerry Richard did a great job leading, so, just wonderful. You know, that's, we love our small town, right, these great local community events, and just, it was a nice outpouring to thank our deceased service people, yeah. All right, what else was I gonna report on?
I just had one more thing. I know that when I spoke last week about my vision for Winthrop with the flags.
Yes.
I talked to a few people.
Okay.
Don Rose was originally, got it passed here, so it was before my time and Angus' time. So I talked to Richie Naget, so maybe you can direct me to someone at EverSource, I would like to get that done, hopefully before 4th of July. We missed one, go further.
So Dwayne's has graciously volunteered to spearhead and donate, if we can do flags on the telephone poles out in the Winthrop section, because people just love the flags on the poles on Main Street, and it just looks so nice. So thank you for doing that. I will look into, I don't know who at EverSource to call, do you have any idea of?
A new liaison.
Yeah.
Start with a new liaison, and then make...
I just don't want to go out there, start hanging the flags out there now. People will probably pull me over.
Steve would have to ask you.
As Rich Naget has told me, though, the way, they picked the light poles, because that way the flags are illuminated 24 hours a day, which you need if they're gonna be up at night, so...
But we had, I have found a vendor to buy solar ones, solar lights on, so, this is a venture that's gonna be a Gates family, my parents can be involved in it, and again, we want to do something for Winthrop. You know, Winthrop is a nice little parade, one of the longest-running parades, I just think that stretch of, there would be nice with some flags.
Plus the history of the cemetery there, and the revolutionary soldiers buried there, the whole thing.
I think that's wonderful.
So you've only got about, it's hard to believe, but what, seven weeks between now? So...
Okay, I will reach out, we have a new, well, relatively new liaison, so I will reach out to her and see if she can hunt down the answer for us, but, that's great for the follow-up.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, what was my other follow-up? Because you had put a few things.
I gotta remember my follow-ups, do you follow up?
Well, you had written an email, and I said, "We can talk, we'll mention it."
Well, we can look it up in the interim, or check your notes. I'd like to share, was that the River Valley Transit Board meeting? And they, I just wanted to share some updates on the rugs.
Okay.
And we have a box of these, and they're, just put them over by the town clerk's office. They start tomorrow, and two of them affect us, Route 642, which goes from Old Sabrook to Deep River, and you remember, this was the one that was going to Chester, but returning around in Deep River.
Route 652?
642.
642.
I'll give you this, when we're done. They're adding service, which I think is great, it's from every two hours, it's going to be every hour now, so that's a big increase, every hour up until 4:30. Route 640 is just a loop around Old Sabrook, and again, they're going from two hours to hourly, and 644 impacts us here in Deep River, that's Old Sabrook up to Middletown, and they have added Saturday service.
Nice.
So for that one, it's only gonna be every two hours, but they've added Saturday service, so.
Awesome.
That's a plus, and the new schedules, if anyone needs them, will be right on that little tabletop outside the town clerk's office.
Awesome, all right, so focus, get your new schedules, yeah, great report.
I couldn't help for you, Carol.
Yeah, I was taking a minute, so I didn't want to open the microphone and look, but...
Yeah, I know. We still have a connection here.
Yeah, there were just a couple of follow-up kind of things. We are about to publish the RFP for the Plattwood Pavilion, new, excuse me, concessions and restrooms, so look for that, if anyone wants to bid on that. Jacobson has that all completed, so we're gonna publish it, put it on the state website.
And we received an email there from a resident, with some issues down there, are those gonna get taken care of? At Plattwood?
Plattwood, yes. Park and Rec is working on those right now, they were, I think they, we had already ordered grills a few years ago, the grills are probably up at the town garage. But we're not gonna replace that one next to the pavilion now, we're gonna just pull it out, because with the new pavilion going in, that might not be the perfect spot for a grill, and we don't want to cement it in, and then have to pull it out after. But the one there is all rotted, so we will pull that one out.
All right, let's see, what have I got here? MS4, we're talking about work sessions for all the ordinances, and you were saying you wanted either work session or...
I reached out to Tony, and Tony said that planning and zoning, are you here for ZBA?
I'm on spot.
Well, there's a meeting upstairs, and there's a meeting in that small conference room.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, not sure which one.
Yeah, the only other one was the ordinances, and also, and I know you're gonna want to do that at a planning and zoning meeting, that's what...
Tony said that some of the planning and zoning commission members wanted to be at that meeting, so then I suggested perhaps we make a point to go to one of their meetings and put on their agenda.
As long as it gives us a little time, because it's...
But then I think we'll hog up their whole agenda.
It's a hands-on session, you know, trying to figure out the logistics of it. And then the last thing is, one of the citizens had written about a noise ordinance, and I don't know if we're gonna consider that, or...
Well, I did talk to zoning quite a while ago, I got another resident complaining about neighbors, and I've talked to the resident trooper, too, I mean, in zoning enforcement. I think there's just, it's really a hard thing to measure, because if the noise only lasts, if continuous noise, and then we don't have noise meters, I believe, you know, right, Steve, there were these kind of things, like, so if there's a loud car that goes by, unless you get the license plate, I mean, there's no way to kind of judge that noise right at that moment, unless you have the meter right there, and you're right there when the noise is happening, you know? If it's a prolonged noise, that's a little different, then it's easier to, but I know that with the issue with the residential property, had a complaint about a neighbor, and that came up about a year and a half, two years ago, and under the other administration had looked into it, and that was, it's a very difficult thing to...
I just think you should be responded to one way or the other. You did attach some draft ordinances, was it Branford or Guilford, I don't remember which town.
Hartford, I thought, right, Hartford, one of them was a bigger city, or...
Yeah, so...
But, yeah.
Maybe we turn that over to planning and zoning, and ask them to take a look at it.
I did, I sent it up to zoning, and then Zoe and I talked about it, and I said, "I know this, we've talked about this before," and that sort of thing, so, but I will certainly respond, but I believe that was kind of the gist of it, right, Steve? It was very hard to...
Yeah, technically, right now, it's a silver matter, so...
But we don't have... Those were the lists of things they had raised.
All right, anything else?
Question.
Yes?
I was speaking with the people at the Valley Shore today, when I picked up the[1671.12]
I was speaking with the people at the Valley Shore today when I picked up the equipment.
Yeah.
And they're doing updates with board of selectmen of the towns that they represent, and it's 10 minutes like per month where they select men, update the citizenry on what's going on, that kind of thing. They wanted to know if you're interested in doing that.
Yeah, they, they have reached out to me because Norm, I think, and Cindy does one over there, I don't know, I, this whole TV thing I find a little, you know. So I said, well, I do a weekly newsletter, I didn't know what else I was supposed to tell people, but, I mean, if we want to do it as a group, we could try that too, but I don't, again, don't know what new information we put out there, so. We can think about it, get back to them.
It's good to know it's an option.
Like, safety in numbers, I mean, I like, I don't understand. But thank you for relaying that info.
I'll just bring it up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Seconded.
All right, well, adjourn at 7:19, all those in favor?
Okay, all right. Cindy, you wish to.
Continue the conversation.
Continue the conversation, yes.
To the overage with the salary of the gate guard down at the landing, which seems to be profitable at May, perhaps, and you have the money in the line item anyway that would cover that position.
We have money in the position already, what funding are you looking?
Well, because she's saying it will.
She said the money she has currently in this budget will cover what you need.
For this summer, right.
For this summer, and then we go into July and you start all over again.
Right. Was there a shortage? Did I misunderstand that, sorry?
There's potentially a shortage after this summer, so to cover May and June of next fiscal year.
Okay.
Wouldn't you prefer to wait and see what that shortage is?
Yes.
That's a good question, yes.
So in October.
And it is, it goes to the question we're sort of fooling around, the numbers in that budget are.
Yeah, it needs to be.
Yes. I offer the following very clear sight, there is a difference of opinion on what that budget is going to accomplish through the Board of Finance and the people on that board. We believe there are certain activities that are done that people pay fee and pay for activities that the Park and Rec promised. Camp, being the finest example, other activities. And, next question, do you folks see that seat?
I see it. Yeah, so Camp hypothetically is one of our self-funding programs, right, so whatever revenue we make from Camp is supposed to cover.
It does not cover all of your expenses.
Correct.
Self-funding may not be the correct word that we have been using.
Correct.
Subsidizing, okay. And I offer, it's a question to be deferred, does the citizen, do we expect citizens of the down Deep River to pay for kids to go to camp? Is that part of their tax dollars? I don't know the answer. Part of me says yes, but I don't know the answer.
Just as historical reference, in New Eton, you did have to pay for the kids to go to camp.
They pay now, but they just, it used to cover the cost of camp, it no longer does.
Do you need to change the theme?
How much is it, do you know?
On the top of my head, I want to say a hundred. Was it like $190, something around there? I want to say it's $165.
A week?
Yes, per week.
Who's that? It's you, come on, please.
I was expecting her ringtone to be like mildly aggressive.
Yeah, I know. Sounds like rain.
So, so anyhow, I suggest we need to deal with this in a more specific and detailed way, and you'll put together a budget that you.
For, for October.
We will, we will listen.
Sounds great.
There is a mismatch.
Thank you very much for, thank you for having me.
And you are proceeding with spending $40,000?
We are proceeding with that, yes. I can get, you know, kind of final numbers on what we're going to be using and send you a spreadsheet if that works.
That'd be good.
That'd be good.
There's a curiosity.
Sure, I can get that too, absolutely, I'll get that to you by June. Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
All right, Ms. Carl, we sort of jumped over you, horrible phrase.
Why would you do that?
Would you, would you like to jump back?
We were in a meeting, that's why you had to jump over me.
Do you have recommendations and actions you wish us to take?
I'm writing quick notes so I can remember. A couple of things to report, there was a roof leak at the library, so I did have the roofing company over there, they patched it up, said we should be good to go, I do not have the cost of that right now, it was an emergency situation, so we had to act on it. It is the same company that has worked on the firehouse roof and the school, McCree Roofing, so a very reputable company, and they respond very quickly for us, so hopefully it won't be too much, but they found at least two spots of, but they were able to be up on the roof, they actually called me and said, we're here right now, we're on the roof fixing it, so he was talking to me while it's on the roof. So that might be something that comes in, I don't know if that's going to be. What was the other one? Oh, the auditorium roof, basically we started on the stage, we had the Sears drywall coming out to fix the plaster, they discovered the entire rigging, if you will, was detached from the ceiling, so we had to stop work immediately, and we have to figure out how to reattach that whole rack of lights or whatever it's supposed to be up, and it's kind of just hanging up from the ropes. So we don't know if it happened, you know, a week after they officially opened the auditorium or if it happened last week, like, so, but luckily nobody, it hasn't fallen on anyone's head or anything, so I'm only laughing because it's like that, you know, Murphy's Law, like what can go wrong or whatever. So right now, we are waiting to hear, we've reached out to the Goodski to see if they have anybody special that does riggings and that sort of thing. So I don't have a cost for you, Dick Leighton thinks it's going to be a little more substantial than what we put aside in capital for this year, so I'll report it as soon as I get a number on that, so just be aware that that might.
I missed your qualifier, will it be substantial or will it not be substantial?
Dick said it would be more substantial than what we thought, well, what the plaster was going to be, so I don't know what substantial means.
We put 50 of capital and you were using the 50 of capital, and so you're suggesting that it will be greater than the 50 we put away.
That's what Dick Leighton is assuming. Again, we don't know, we don't have any numbers, but.
Is there concern that it could fall now, or is there any way that it can be, like?
I guess, I guess it could fall, but it could have fallen two months ago too, perhaps, so I, right now, the stage is still, you know, closed off.
No, I was just wondering, rather than having it fall and break, is there any way to, like, reinforce it or something temporarily so we don't have more damage?
I can talk to Dick, I mean, the Sears, they left their scaffolding up there, so I would think if it falls, it's not going to fall far, but, you know, that's a good question, I can kind of ask how they tied it off before they left. So that's a potential big bill, I'm not sure.
And the ceiling, is the ceiling in the stage area as opposed to the big dome?
Oh, yes, totally, it's all.
The dome is fine?
Yes, it's all just in the stage area, because that's where the, the stuff was attached, and the dome is fine. It goes right up to the roof practically. Let's see.
No, I've reached Playhouse, also just did a lot of work, so maybe check with them to if you can hear back.
What would?
I've reached Playhouse, did a lot of work recently.
I've reached Playhouse, that's right.
Talked to Dick on the mold committee there, they put all the curtains up there, general threat, so.
Yes, Dick, Dick was reaching out to them too because they have just, and then they have plans, I don't know if you know, one of Region 4's capital expenditures is to redo the stage of Valley, they're going to refinish it, and they said, when I was up there last week, they said underneath, there were some areas that had like old, old boards underneath and all this, and they said, it's amazing how it wasn't reinforced in some areas and stuff like that, but, so that's, we were thinking the same thing, like, me and Dick were saying, oh, Valley's already kind of working on their stage, maybe they have a good connection for us, so. We had a police officer resign today, Steve is here, if you have any questions, so we, as part-time police officer, Dan Coito, and we just want to wish Officer well, and we appreciate his service to Deep River, everyone loved him, so that's just something that will be placing his position, I would think, at some point, so just wanted you guys to be aware. And then estuary, basically the estuary had reached out to all the nine towns that are part of the Meals on Wheels program, they had a commercial stove breakdown, they've got a $40,000 grant, but they're looking to, oh no, excuse me, they secured a $10,000 grant towards the $40,000 project, and they were looking for $2,500 emergency funding from each of the nine towns, so I was going to ask the town if they wanted to, if you guys wanted to expend some money out of our surplus for this, and then the board of selectmen were talking, maybe we want to ask residents to maybe do a little donation, and then we also suggested asking the Community Health Committee, so, looking at you only because I know you're on that committee, so we can investigate that, I can approach the Community Health Committee if you think that's better served for the $2,500, but it's a one-time ask, emergency, to help them pay for this new commercial kitchen, stove or oven that they need. And then they do Meals on Wheels for seniors throughout the area, so I know a lot of our seniors in Deep River utilize this to help our residents out as well.
So my only thought, and I'll speak for the Community Health Committee.
Yeah.
Is when we solicit funds, we're very specific that they go to the backpack and the food pantry, so I realize Meals on Wheels is food for citizens of Deep River, but it would be like soliciting from the residents, because that's where we get all our funds, so.
Okay. So do you think I should approach the board?
Or should we just pay for it out of town funds? I guess is what I'm thinking.
I mean, everyone on the Community Health Committee, you think, would share that same?
I, I.
Because I don't mind coming to a meeting.
I can, I'm happy to present, but I'm just thinking that.
Do you think if you solicited to the community, you'd get more than $2,500?
Well, Catherine suggested like I do with the REIT fund, you know, we kind of put it out in the newsletter, and we got about, I think about $1,200 came in for the REITs, so it really helped to offset the cost of the REITs all over town, so, you know, a lot of people utilize Meals on Wheels and they know, maybe their friend or their relative or something, so maybe people would say, sure, I'll chip in a little, you know, to help you. So it's worth trying, I don't mind doing that, but, but again, it's not a lot of money, so I thought I would just approach the board to see.
I think we should just pay for it out of, just find the money, you may not just find the money somewhere?
You talking about this year or next year?
This year.
I think if you can get money, solicit money through the townspeople, do that, and then what comes up short, then perhaps we can take that from our surplus.
And I can take it to Community Health Committee and ask them if they want to donate.
Okay, so.
I should think if they're going to have a response.
And then see if we, what we can.
When you get the money, then.
They needed a shout-out, right?
Yeah, when is the deadline, do they give us a just date?
I, I reached out to them on 5/22, I called, left a message, so I'll try them again tomorrow and see where they are in their collections, because we had a similar, like, how many other towns have stepped up, like, are they, is $2,500 still what they need, or maybe they need $3,000 now or something, you know, I don't know, but I could get more information from them and then I'll try all these other ideas that you guys have come up with.
Were they also asking for help because they had lost some funding? Didn't I see that somewhere? You know when I saw that in the newspaper, that they were going to reach out to every town to ask for more help because they'd lost a lot of funding?
Yes, so that might still be coming down the pike, as they say, so perhaps you're right, that would be the better, reach out to the residents now and then see. Time for the big count. I hope you all voted.
You have in your, in your, what do you call it, we make contributions to various agencies, you have a public service agency, $3,500.
Is that unspent?
Well, it's in next year's budget, so I'm going to lean towards a no.
Can we put that in the budget for Guilford's Legals?
The women's.
The women's legal services in Guilford. That sounds like thousands of children.
Guilford's in there as well, but it's, we've got a public service generic, we've named certain public services, agencies, but then there's a public service agencies chair.
Well, if we can, if we can pay them this year out of something else, because I think next year. As Jackie said, everybody's going to, a lot, I would think funding is getting cut, even if cred perhaps and stuff, so we might see more asked from our regional affiliations that maybe we don't want to touch it. Public service agency this year, we have.
Spent, I would assume it's spent by this year.
We have $448 left, we've spent 87.2% of them, and that's under public service agencies. Yeah, it was budgeted for $3,500, we've spent $3,052.
Yeah.
So that's 48, you know, 448, I could, already towards, you know, are coming up at 25. Well, let me do what Carmela suggested, we'll reach out and then I'll come back, or I'll send an email or something, I mean, because now we don't know until the next, you guys want to meet once a month, so.
That's the other concern, I guess, if it's more urgent, if it's.
Okay, well, let me find out from them tomorrow. I mean, they, it says I'm reaching out with an urgent request, so I think they are trying to, but at this point, maybe they've already got the commercial order and they're trying to figure it out on there and how to likely create their operating revenues now or something, you know, I mean, okay.
All right, so you've got the newsletter, Community Health Fund.
Yes, and maybe everybody chips away and then they just come up with the money, like every group, $500 here or something, it's going to add up, so. Okay, and then, what else did I have? What?
Department lady.
Oh, yes. So Park and Rec, so Kaylee, when she got hired, the offer letter said that she was going to get a, a re, like a, I don't know what you call it, a bump up in her salary if she got a professional affiliate, when she took her professional licensing, well, she was able to take it last week, so the way the award letter says is if she achieves the professional license, she will get a increase in her salary of $1,500, I believe. During, and I think the way Emery stated it, or we had it written in the letter, which I signed, and we had a good discussion about it, was during the calendar year which earned, which would be now. That would subject her salary to go up now, and then it would be then subjected to 3% July 1st, but obviously that's not in the budget, so. I brought it to Bud's attention this afternoon, because Tara and I were talking about it and said, do we award it now or do you wait till July 1st? But again, the way the letter is written, it says in the calendar year that you earned your professional certification, so.
It is the calendar year, it's just not the fiscal year.
Exactly.
So wouldn't that, if it's calendar year, if you do it in July, then that's fine, my reading of English?
Well, you could read it that way, or you could read it in the calendar year, like, meaning as soon as you get it, you're awarded, you don't have to wait for the fiscal year, so. Anyway, bringing it to your attention, because now that'll throw off her line, next year she's going to look like she's over on her salary line.
And what was the bump up, how much?
I believe it was $1,500.
In total?
In total, but then that would be subjected obviously July 1st to the 3%.
And what did we budget for next year?
Well, whatever she is making now plus 3%.
About a hundred or you want, you have a.
We'll be basically short by $1,500.
This year, and then the 3% of that going forward.
Board of Finance, Senator Phillips, my record is, if that's what she was promised, that's her obligation.
Did we know that?
Did we?
Well, I think based on her credentials and the, and the requirements of that certification, the anticipation was that she would have to be employed for a bit with the town before she could sit for it, but she had other experience that the commission, the Park and Rec Commission when they interviewed her wasn't aware, so it was a nice surprise that she was able to sit for it quickly, because you want all your people in these positions, especially our director, to have any, all the certifications are required, so we're thankful that she's able to earn it, and we're excited and happy and congratulate her, but then all of a sudden it threw this little wrinkle into the budget numbers, that's all, so.
So we budgeted $66,950 for next year, and that will cover, is what you're saying?
I don't know what we budgeted, but I'm looking.
Right here.
I mean, I haven't.
Here.
Oh, that will cover it, because that's not what she's currently making.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so I think.
But this was back in March, that's an old copy or something, isn't it?
Well, yeah, but we didn't change that.
I have a 417.
I can look just if I can, I do or what?
What, what was that budget at that point?
65 is what I have on a 417, 2025.
Then, then this might be a whole meat point, because that's more than what her current salary is.
Do you know what her current, her current salary is? Somebody's not live 65.
65 was the old fellow, the old fellow, the prior director.
The old fellow.
Was making 65 on the old fellow.
3% is only for $45, so.
Her current salary is 58, it looks like, because I see it's.
So if she was 58, that would put her at 59.5.
Yeah, so if it was budgeted already at a higher rate, then we're fine.
Well, let me look if that was.
59.5.
Although I did, because then it looked like she got a very large increase.
What month, which, what budget do you?
I have 417.
417, and it's still there at 65?
These copies that don't have the color on them, very hard to follow where things are.
I'm just going to do some quick math.
All right, then I don't think it matters then with the numbers, just to bring it to your attention, I think we're fine then.
Okay, so we reset on that, right?
Do a summary for me, you want to pay her, out of this year's salary, the 1,500?
Oh, so the budget was 59.
59, 59,740.
59,740.
And you're adding close to 2,000 to it?
Is what's budgeted for next year.
Which is going to put her over.
So that will put her over. So, sorry, Carmel, unscrap all your ideas. So the current budget for next year is 59,740.
That would put her at 61,285 with the $1,500 and the 3%.
61,285.
My math, yeah, 61,285.
So then it will be over by how much? Like, 1,500 plus 3%?
Am I reading the right line? I have this as program director's salary.
But that's current budget.
That's what?
Current budget.
Here's the budget for, this is the proposed budget. If it gets passed tonight, this is the numbers for, okay?
Okay.
Let's see, 1,285.
This is what is in the budget for next year, for that position.
Okay. Which would put her exactly 1,545 over.
Correct. The 15, then the 3%.
So it's something just to be aware of, and then at some point, you can make an adjustment or if then.
It's such a small number.
They come back with other salary issues, and then we have to make an adjustment, maybe do it all at once?
When does the raise happen?
Okay.
The raise happens July 1?
July 1. It'll be a full no.
Her salary is 59.5 right now. Either way, it's going to go over 15.
Yeah.
No matter which way you slice it, so.
That's correct. 1,545.
But it's a one time, it's a one, a one time $1,500 stipend for the.
No, it's permanent. You added that to her salary. This is not a one time, this is stipend?
No, it's a one time, but it's permanent. So we don't take that, we don't take it away.
Fifteen hundred dollar pay raise, not a 1,500 dollar incentive to.
1,500 pay raise, that's correct. And I might have stated that incorrectly, but that's correct. Gotcha.
Okay. All right, Carol, keep on going. Cut everybody on the edge of their seats.
What else do I have? Quick, quick. I got the attention of everyone. What do we got?
Carol, did we get any payment on the invoice on the police coverage for that event that we sent to a private citizen? Did that, did we get, did that payment come in?
I talked to that private citizen, so no. At this point, it did not. The other, the tri-town did send the payment in.
Okay, thank you.
You have not paid it, but we asked him. Story was that, the lot truck was, how do you, when you have troubles with the machine, don't tow it away, put it back. I saw it before already. Well, perhaps you, I was looking for some mechanical way of getting it somewhere that they can cure it, but that is, there's still work to be done on that, correct? Substantial work to be done on that. We put 25 into next year's budget, but rumor has that that is not going to be happened.
We don't have the estimate back, but I know it, so I don't.
And you were not willing to say?
Probably not. No, because I don't want to start my own rumor, so I'm just going to get the fact and I don't think it worked.
How much did it cost to get it back and serviced?
I don't have that.
Oh, you don't have that number?
I don't think we got that invoice from them yet.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I did have one other thing. Wayne just reminded me. So the selectmen all approved the legal notice, so the town properties will be in the Valley Currier on Thursday. The two vacant properties for sale. And then we'll also put it on the website on Thursday, so that it's all to the public at the same time, so. Right now, we have bids, sealed bids due on the 18th of June at 11:30, and we will open the sealed bids at noon on the 18th. Anyone wants to be here for that exciting day?
And that's for the anticipated sale of two lots that was, what, $220,000? Was that an assessed value or anticipated sale price or?
Sort of all of the above. I mean, that's what we're asking. We're asking 120 for one parcel, 100 for the other parcel. As like a minimum bids, is what we would like it to come in as, minimum.
So tell me that again for a minute, minimum bids, or what, 125, 120?
Minimum bids are 120 for one parcel and 100 for the other second parcel.
And the bidders have set some minimum bid?
Yes. That's sort of our reserve or minimum bid. And whoever is bidding has to do their due diligence, speak to zoning, speak to building, you know, do all their homework. So that's fine.
Do you want to alert them to the potential cost of library repairs on the room for their registers, if they may be coming up?
The next item on our agenda, which we're going to have.
I don't know.
We're going to defer for a while. We will wait for the results of the referendum. If there's a positive, we will set the mill rate. I'll tell you what, while, while on this subject.
The eight minutes.
The WPCA, in their draft budget, has promised to give the town $150,000, which is not included in our vote. They have.
What's not included, 50,000?
50,000 more. And they wish to put into their budget, the, what you call it, the.
The pump out boat.
The pump out boat. Right now, it's just two budgets, which I'm very uncomfortable with, but that would provide us an additional six plus thousand dollars. So the WPCA will give us an additional $56,000. Question for you, for the finance, with an additional $56,000, do you still wish to set the mill rate at an increment of .6, or do you wish it comes down a bit? If you came down.
Can you do that and not have to go back to the vote again?
So you decide what the mill rate is.
But it's already voted on and.
Budget's been voted on, we haven't voted on the mill rate.
Lower the mill rate, right? But you can't raise the mill rate?
Second?
You can lower the mill rate tonight, you can't raise it. Okay? If it passes tonight, I think Carmel was asking, if it passes tonight, it's going about .60 mill, correct?
Well, that's the conversation I'm encouraging us to have. Why could, when I'm suggesting it's going down, do you wish to have a conversation about, why can't it go up?
I thought, I thought once it's published, I can't name which.
Where was it published, other than me saying it? And that's, I do not intend for it to go up, I was just curious where you drive that from.
Well, it was presented at two town meetings.
I have no problem with that, that's what they were expecting. So I have no problem with that. No, the question becomes, are you interested in using that 56 to reduce it in any way?
So I'm concerned about the fact that, we'll accept the fact that they can pay for the pump out boat. So you've got a very limited number of residents who are on the line paying for the pump out boat versus the entire town.
I do too.
So I'm not sure we should accept that, because they're raising the rates, and then they're taking that over. And I realize it's only $6,500, but it just doesn't feel right to me.
An excellent question. When it should come up, they're going to respond, residents are not paying for it, hollers are paying for it.
Okay.
Not sure, I believe, I'm uncomfortable how it all is intermingled, but that would be the answer that you would get.
Well, then I think the argument would also be, well, not everybody uses the pump out boat, so.
That I didn't, I didn't think the town should pay for it. I think individual people.
Where I almost had them on that board. The town is in agreement with other towns to set the terms of what we're paying. Why the WPCA wants to get involved, I don't know, other than they are attempting to give the town some dollars that they have, and that seems like it is worthy of smart.
Or we go it over to someone that we could just pay a bill.
Is there a profit to be realized to them if they take over emptying the pump out boat or whatever it is? Do they gain more by having more?
They do not gain anything. The town is the one who signs the contract. I wouldn't be surprised at what they pump out and, oh, at the sewer, but there's no, no additional benefit to them. I would have had, preferred to have them just give the town more money, but this is what they wanted to do, so be it.
So they are essentially giving us another $6,500, which is a good thing.
But we do work for them too. We do their billing and.
They pay us for that, they pay us for that, $35,000 a year.
Oh, they're billing.
And that's an equitable split, time in, effort out kind of thing?
I think they've, they've done those.
Emery did a lot of work on that, so yes.
She, Emery did.
That's why we raised it this year, to pick up. Emery was keeping track of, here's the amount of time that we do, and they will reimburse us for those. So I'm, I mean, exact math, I do not think it'll match, but it's pretty close. You should be comfortable, they're paying us for what we reimburse, we incur. So I don't, it's something to think about when we get closer to voting on the mill rate. Anyone have any thoughts? It would bring us down, if we use 56, it would bring us down to 12, puts it virtually, if we, if we kept the 56, it would put us about 13% surplus. If we use it, it would bring us down to about the 12.75 that we said we were targeting.
And you know, I think when I hear things like, we've got the scaffolding, this other issue.
So that adds my thought. 50 acter is not going to be, is better to be with us than someplace else, is my leaning.
I mean, we do have, we need to get the fire trucks fixed.
Yep.
For that money.
That's what I'm saying, is.
We will have difficulty finding a place to put it.
Right, right.
We'd have to find money somewhere else for it.
Yeah, I just keep the mill rate at the .6.
I mean, that's what people are sort of aware of and voting on.
That's what we put it out there as.
Good, good. All right. The, where finance interviewed a potential, someone interested in joining the board, and Cindy, I forgot what his name, because part of his G is silent.
The G is silent. Go for it, bud.
Okay.
Tim Pugliel. Pugliel.
Pugliel, Pugliel.
You've got to spell that for me. P U G L. Wait a minute. P U G. L I E L L I.
Pugliel, as I know it, we keep the G, glee, we'll glee you. But anyhow, he was very impressed with board finance, so voted positively to offer him the position. So I announced it at the special meeting, but it was only us. I will announce it at this meeting as well, is required to be announced publicly by state statute, so. And one of us has to reach out to him. Will you reach out to him? Yes, he's sworn in. He cannot sit unless he's sworn in.
Who are you asking?
Yeah, we, do you chat with him from time to time? If you give me his number.
In fact, I am, there's a meeting with him tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
So what would you like people to do, bud? Have him.
He has, and he has to have it, he has to be sworn in.
Sworn in with the town clerk.
That's correct. And he can sit next month.
Just come to the town clerk and get it right.
And sit next month, that's correct.
All right.
And I will be at tomorrow, and I will be sure that the town clerk is aware.
So he's filling Carol Hanover's seat. Then when will that expire? Do you need to. That should be the minutes.
I don't believe so. We did that special meeting.
Who took minutes? You did?
Yes. Well, it consists of, we went into special meeting, came out. So I'll do those, I'll do that. All right.
You can't take a vote in it, section.
Carol, they came out with that, it should be in the minutes when his term is up, that he has to be on ballot, because he's filling in Carol's seat.
Is it November?
Next election.
Yeah, so November 2025, his term is.
At that point, he's on the ballot, so. To replace Carol.
So he's filling a vacancy.
He will be on the ballot to replace her.
November 2025.
So he'll only be on the ballot if he gets endorsed by a party and he gets on the ballot. He's not automatically on the ballot.
That's a good point, although rumor has it that he's okay.
Right, but I mean, for the sake of your minutes, you just say he's filling in his vacancy.
That's a good point. That's a good point, yes. All right, let's use our time, go over the budgets, the actual budget, okay? And polls have officially closed, according to my.
Thank you, thank you.
My thought.
Any word?
And.
What did we, low hearted, two states.
All is.
When I went in five something, there were about 300 people.
Really?
Yes. Yeah, we're.
I'm not sure it's going to be that long.
It could be, Emery was trying to get Tara because of the holiday, she just forgot, she came in, go, oh, I never did this on Friday.
The parents, mothers, mostly mothers, there's all out there with signs in the middle of the streets, so when you get the right people on your side.
You got the right people.
Cindy, you just whispered, Dad, you can say that publicly. Okay, let us look at the first page. I'm going to use our time to focus on revenues, which I wish to have you think of gleefully. We are doing very well with revenues. I find this new form coming from our new system to be a bit complicated.
I agree.
For instance, the revenues are reported as a negative. Really simple to understand. We have expenses, and we will use the negatives from the revenue to cover the expenses, except I find when you try to apply that line by line, it gets a little confusing. But let's start with the first one. Property taxes, we budgeted, an assumption that we would collect $17,140 in tax revenue.
17 million.
That's it?
17 million.
17 million, 140, oh, seven four. To date, and through today, I believe, we have collected 17 million, oh, 23,550, leaving us, you have to go way, oh, okay, let's take the next line, because it's confusing. It's there. Which means this month, we have collected $18,457. But you've got to go all the way over to available budget, the 116. We have $116,523 remaining to be collected, but we've collected 99.3. Remember, we take numbers that are given to us by the assessor, and we make the assumption that we will collect 98% of it in the current year. In future years, it will be in arrears. So I offer to you, we're doing very well there. With that now, tax relief reserve, tax exemption, we give, the town provides to fire, I think you have AMLEDS as well, but fire, take advantage of it, and certain elderly tax exemptions. We have put into our budget for years, 42 and 26. In July, we gave fire 25,200 tax exemptions, and elderly, we have given $24,240. So certainly, that 42 and 26, which is a reduction from the line above, is too aggressive. We will have more money coming in as revenues. And let's just not keep this going. Now, remember, we have negatives indicating it's monies to come in. When it goes to a positive, such as property tax and arrears, motor vehicles, supplements and interest, you see they're all positive. So we have collected, to date, not, not dealing with those tax revenues, $43,000 overcollected through the month of May. Let's go down a bit to current services. The WPCA, first line, they will pay us in the current budget here, $30,000 for providing services. I can't, we have to build them, but that money will come in, all right? Bulky waste contract, 105, the town of Chester pays us 105.
Just for a second, Bud, make a comment. So shouldn't we build them earlier, so we've got that money in?
I mean, Tom does everything with interest, and I would think what makes a difference over 12 months, is basically we're giving them a 12-month loan if we don't build them. Or we build them.
I would agree with you, but yes, and since we know that day one, I totally agree. It is, it is, yes.
Who will communicate that? How does that get communicated to the billers?
To the finance director.
To the billers?
The billers. It's only Tara now, you know, so it's a one man.
I can, I can speak to Tara tomorrow.
I chatted with her this morning on this very subject. Same is true with the bulky waste from the Town of Chester, hundred and five. Catherine, you can say the same thing. Who knows, a hundred and five. They've only paid us twenty-six thousand so far.
Yeah, but that's in the contract that they pay like quarters, pieces, yeah.
That's fine with me. I, I don't know what kind of, it's fine. It just seems to be, here we are sitting at the end of May, and you owe us a hundred and five. That contract should be worked on, if that's what you got.
They still owe us seventy-eight thousand, right?
They owe us seventy-eight thousand dollars, that is correct. You then get into the assessments. These are sewer assessments. When a line goes past, your sewer line goes past your property, you are assessed various dollars. Some places, the older assessments are two, newer are five, uh, and that is paid to the town, since the town is paying the interest, interest and principles. We've got a little bit of ways to bill on those. Rental income of town equipment, well, that's basically the... The street sweeper. Street sweeper, which they do in May and June, right? So I have confidence that number will come in. It has just not come in. So, while we are under budget, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in that line, I think you should have confidence that we'll do okay. We'll leave break even. Let's move down. Again, I said we'd focus on tax revenues, which I think we're doing very well. License and permits, building permits. Look, we have, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars have been collected by our building department. When we get to his expenses, you will see he is over budget, but he is collecting way in excess of his, of his costs. Let's go to conveyance tax. I shall attempt to offer more information than I have. When you sell a property in the state of Connecticut, you pay a conveyance tax. And depending upon the, the worth of your property, what you're selling it for, that can be from either one percent to two point seven five percent. The town that you are in selling, it gets a quarter of that tax revenue. So you can see that we budgeted forty-two. We have received, uh, to date, what, seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight.
So, uh, again, we budgeted in this category, one ninety-nine, and we're up over three twenty-five, and I still think monies are coming in. Federal and state grants, FEMA is zero, but that one thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars, that is interest, but is attributed to them. State federal funds, um, are doing okay. glance at that roof revenue. Remember, back in the Angus days, we received a grant to repair the roof at the high school. Hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, we have still not received it. I feel fairly comfortable. Carol, you need to take over. How comfortable are you? You should be comfortable, we're going to receive it. How comfortable are you going to receive it in this calendar year, this fiscal year?
That I don't know. I've just emailed, uh, we've been emailing back and forth twice. So she finally has everything she needs, and, uh, they're working on getting us the money.
Okay.
The woman from the state, so.
It will happen.
It will happen.
It will happen, okay? And grants for municipalities, that one oh four, that comes in virtually June thirtieth. So you should have comfort there. So again, I believe you will have in excess of funds here. Dropping down to the next, so miscellaneous revenues. Park and rec, we're not getting a hundred and thirty-three from this, we've said that a couple times. Look at recycling fees. Carol, you take over. We are selling our recycling, and make, we're up to eighty-five thousand dollars, we're selling it for?
Well, that probably has all the metal recycling in there and that sort of thing, yeah.
That's pretty impressive. I thought it was going in the opposite direction. Okay, and, uh, and of course, we should stop for a moment and give Tom credit that he is, uh, single-handedly generating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Let's hear it for Tom.
Let's hear it for Tom.
Wait till next year.
And, and, and there's a pause, there's a, is the world getting more complicated? The interest rates going up or down next year?
Probably going down.
Think so.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No.
I think the world's a pretty scary place.
Well, I, okay.
I think they say we're on four. That's my prediction.
Well, that would be, that'd be great.
Uh, we got, um, mortgages are over, over six percent or seven percent, you know, like that? Off, a sidebar. Alright, uh, so, let's use this exciting conversation of revenue to go all the way to the last page, where there is a summary, you know, that's not quite true, next to the last page. Total revenue, we have budgeted twenty million, two hundred and ninety-two, ninety-three thousand. We have collected to date, twenty million, two hundred and forty-six. We have forty-six, forty-seven thousand dollars left. Hopefully, you keep some confidence as we went through those. We will accept, we will get more than that. It is done. Uh, yes votes, two hundred and seventy-two. No votes, one forty-five. Budget basis. Yes votes, two hundred and seventy-two yeses, a hundred and forty-five no's, four hundred and seventeen votes. Does Dwayne, that make you the winner of your...
No, Carol.
Carol?
I guess three eighty-five.
She's lying.
Or seventeen.
You're allowed to go over her, but, okay, so we shall vote.
She wants to support us.
Let us, uh, so I, I'm going to just leave this excitement with, we're doing extremely well in revenues. Let's take a brief run-through of expenses. And anyone can call out anyone they would like. I'm suggesting that we're in, what, the, uh, the eleventh month, we're virtually ninety-one percent of our budget, if it was straight line, which is not, but it's a good indicator. Uh, with that in mind, selectmen are right on budget. Finance Department, well, it looks like the right, yes, the right, but we should pick up, absent a Finance Director, we should pick up some savings there. Elections, that, a couple years ago, we went over on elections. You'll notice that we have changed how we are doing it during. We, uh, we have budgeted twenty thousand dollars for elections. That's in the old days, when we had one day election. Uh, now you have one day and a couple prior days, so we budgeted for early voting as well. We will be under budget in that, that account. Not a lot, but we will be under budget. Town Hall... Carol, remind me, or anybody who wants to participate. It says here, the original budget was fifty thousand dollars for Town Hall buildings. I thought we increased that.
We never, we never transferred the money, huh?
Okay, that's what I thought. We have, uh, we increased that line item, so that one oh eight nine is not an accurate statement there.
Yeah, because Town Hall building repairs.
Correct.
We voted at a town meeting.
Yes, we had enough, thirty-eight thousand, perfect. Uh, and, uh, for those of you who probably have the same thing at home, look at that electricity. Here we are through the end of May, and we're over by, uh, by nine thousand dollars. Same with water, we're over, I know we have money left over. Telephone. Is there any progress that you would like to share, or have they gone into a quietness on your...
No, they're still working. He reached out to me today to say, we're still working on all the accounts. It's just taking a long time. It's very complicated. That consulting company that we, yeah, so they're doing a deep dive into all these different... We just have so many vendors, basically, that we're using that. It's very hard to...
So anyhow, um, I suggested to, uh, electricity and telephone are going over, and we've got an adjustment we'll make to that Town Hall building. I don't think we'll be over. We'll be pretty close to it, but we won't be over. Clerk's doing fine. Board of Finance, uh, it looks like we're over.
Can I just add something?
Absolutely.
So the elevator, we've had a lot of issues with the elevator. So we're over by quite a lot of the elevator, and that's going to go over even more. We had issues with the door, it's just kind of opening and closing. There was a sensor issue. They fixed it. And then it broke again, I guess, so, uh, it is now shut off with the breaker downstairs. He came out the other day, and he said that both of the sensors, the wires were like arguing or something, and so, they're both old. The one at the top of, you know, the auditorium floor and the... So they're going to be replaced. He's sending me a cost for that. I don't have it yet, so.
And you'll be taking that out of Town Building Repairs, as you will with your roof?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan.
So there's a total mystery.
That'll be a little more over. We do not have a maintenance contract for elevator. We only have service, where they just show up and grease it and kind of check it out. So I don't know with the age of the elevator, if that's something we want to look into. So I'll get a price for a maintenance contract, but...
So there's pressure on Town Hall operations?
He said if it needs to be replaced, we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Geez, all right. Replace the whole thing, or just the doors that don't?
No, you replace, I guess, the whole, like, unit, but you can leave the doors. I mean, you can use the casing, you just replace the... Does that sound about, that's what he told me.
Alright.
Some of these old things, about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Where are we on switches? Uh, where are we on bubbler, which I call air conditioning?
A bubbler? Bubbler, I thought that was the water cooler.
He keeps going, Dick keeps going, a bubbler. Oh, anyway, yes.
Dick has not given me the latest and greatest on, uh, air conditioning, so it's, don't have a report for you.
Alright. Town Clerk's fine. Board of Finance, we pay, the town pays for, initially for the WPCA and the schools, so we should be reimbursed for that and come back into line. Assessors on... Mike is willing to tolerate the follow.
What happened?
We...
I lost it. Where?
Well, I'm down in assessor.
Oh. I'm down on assessor.
We gave the assessor two thousand dollars for training. To date, she's incurred three thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars. This is my, you can join if you wanted. Who gives people the right to overspend their budget? Who catches these things? Nobody would want to answer.
Yep.
And I truly don't mind if she comes and says to somebody, I need to spend this for, for some reason, but not just spend it, but... We'll, we'll get to that subject a little bit more. Anyhow, assessor, other than that, seems to be coming in fine. Tax collector's coming in fine. Special services, coming in fine, um... Coming in fine. Big four computer services, I'm interested, as is true, okay? As is bank fees. He tries work. Bank fees are over. Alright, but we should be okay there. Planning zoning, they seem to be coming in fine. A building inspector, we mentioned a moment ago, while they're over budget, he is generating revenues off in the building line. And eleven, fine insurance, we've got money, employee benefits, I believe. We have not made our pension payment yet. The, um... Carol, you talked with Anne Marie on that. We will make that soon, it's the emails, right?
Yes, it's due by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. She said they make it usually end of June or then, so it's...
Alright, uh, now, here is one that we need to chat about, since Steve is here. Steve, virtually every line is over. Where did that come from?
Uh, so, one thing that happened was we had an unexpected OSHA visit, and...
Did you talk to Carol about this? Did she sign off on these orders?
So, we had an unexpected OSHA visit.
Did you talk to Carol about those things?
And we incurred some fees from OSHA, which were taken out of line items. And secondly, we had, uh, purchases that made...
Your telephone is over, your training is over, your accreditation is over. How can you go over your lines? Every line is over.
Accreditation is currently funded by Grant.
Says ten thousand dollars over here.
Okay, it's currently funded by Grant.
It shouldn't be here. Alright, but every line is over. Your full-time officer is over. Who do you discuss these costs with?
Uh, well, his pay is not...
Who do you discuss? You can't just over, you just can't pay over every line.
Okay.
Do you talk with Carol when she comes to us? Do you come and tell us?
Do you want me to speak, or do you want to keep telling me that it's over, because I can give you explanations for why it's over?
I don't care why it's over. You should have come to us and said why it's over. You signed off on these things. You don't have that authority. You have a budget.
Okay. Do you want me to tell the part-time officer he can't work because I'm over?
I want you to come work with the first selectman or the Board of Finance and not overspend your budget.
Okay. I, I asked for money to, to buy the tasers from you guys, which you approved, uh, that I didn't have a line item for, and it was taken out of the training budget. So we still have to perform training in order to keep our certification, so.
You've overspent your budget. How, where are you going to get these dollars? You've overspent your budget.
Okay. This is what it is, this is how.
It's no, it's no. We should have, we have to have controls. You have selectmen, you should be working these things through. What if everybody in town decided, I have to visit for OSHA in my budget, I have no budget. Everyone has a degree crazy.
I've, I've discussed this with Carol, and we had a conversant on it.
Carol, you want to agree, are you okay with all these over coverages?
Well, we discussed, I didn't know a lot of the lines are going over, no. So we've had general discussions, like, you know, OSHA expenses were kind of an unforeseen thing, but I...
We've got to have some controls.
Yep, well, OSHA expenses brought us over, and then OSHA required us to purchase new equipment that was empty, which is going to bring us over on the uniform line.
Then you should have talked to Carol, you should have talked to us if you're coming over.
Okay, we, we discussed. I discussed it with Carol. What else do you, I don't have it in front of me, I don't have the, uh, the document in front of me.
I mean, over virtually every line. Don't, I mean, how do you track these things? You don't, never mind, okay.
Is there a process improvement we could make here, when we just look at a process? I'm, I'm wondering if discussing it isn't enough, if there needs to be, when a discussion happens where there's going to be a dollar change, if it needs to be put in some written format to Carol, copying Bud and Board of Finance, so that, you know, I, I think you in good faith are raising, or I think Carol in good faith is going over every issue, but the, the linkage isn't there with the, the expense over.
I think the general discussion needs to have a dollar and cents attached, like, you know, instead of, you have extra expenses from OSHA. Well, what are they? You know, like, how is that going to affect your budget? Because I know in other discussions, it's sort of like, well, we'll probably go over on that line, but then that line I'll be under, you know, something like that. But to see and hear that you're over, um, a lot of lines, it's hard to then, because your bottom line's going to be over then ultimately, you know? So that's a little different than just going over on one line and being less on another line or something.
And the part-time and full-time officers, um, the full-time officer of line item didn't even include his entire salary, which he was, um, his, his hourly pay didn't even come close to what was allotted in his line item. So.
How can you have a budget to be, be able to capture these things and hold you accountable for the budget?
Okay.
And if you go over, talk to Carol, she can bring us, she can bring you to us.
Okay.
But I just, I guess, I just can't overspend your budget.
So the full-time officer right now is a hundred and two percent spent. So basically, there's no money left to melt on. Part-time officers, you're at eighty, they're seventy-four percent.
So they over-govern full-time, can go from the part-time, so payroll.
Alright, move on.
I get, I want to, I guess, instead of just communicating, like Catherine said, have an email, try, an email... So there's a, there's a trade.
Paper trail.
Paper trail. And then it's not, I said, he said, she said, we said, here's a paper trail, you know, leading up, uh, we're going to be over on such and such an item. So there's a paper trail, then Board of Finance, Bud and his team can look at it, and Carol can look at it, or Selectman can look at it, just, I'm a firm believer in communication.
Yeah.
Is this paper trail before they're over strength, or just...
Before.
Before.
As, as you're closing, as I was closing, not, not to call someone else up, but there's another, uh, director in the room here that we get communications from Tim when, when he's going to go over. So again, you need to know this before, not after.
All the departments.
You know, Tim, you do it, so.
Two months ago, when we were here, you asked me if I was going to continue to go over in the miscellaneous fund. I said, straight to your face, yes, this is, this is what happened. We had an OSHA, uh, inspection, and we did incur charges from that, and then we also had to go over in other things because of that. So we, we have discussed this in the past. This isn't, this is the first time this has been addressed. We've, we've had a communication.
Six, I'm over.
Well, we're over at the point, but we had that discussion.
But you got a selectman, that's, you got to go through that. Alright, Fire Department. Um, lots of surplus, but we've got to make our fireman incentive payment next month as well. Sixty-five, sixty, sixty-two, what is it? What is fireman's, seventy, seventy-four, seventy-five thousand? Alright, um... Highway Department, all seems to be going well. Transfer Station is doing well, although they're over, salaries are over as well. Let's track them notes.
I'm sorry, where?
Uh, Transfer Station. Solid West. And I assume you've got two months, at least a month and a half left, so they will continue to go over.
Yeah, I spoke to Eric about that, and, um, he's, he's very aware of that, so.
And I assume he's, well, how about, I mean, we do not know what's going on with the rest of the expenses? Because those, a lot of those come in at the end of the month, don't they? End of the year? I'm just curious with a hundred and fourteen surplus right now, is how much of it will be available?
Uh, let's see. Well, hazardous waste, they've just started those collections, so we, we can build when our residents use them. Well, so we're at ninety-two on that one anyway.
Tipping fees are very substantially under budget. There's a line in those, and you, you probably incur.
Yeah, we just had a few...
Yeah, we just had a few Mirago's come in, so that...
Okay, I'll probably write that up. Okay. And your chipping, that takes place...
Uh, we're going to do a couple of chippings, Eric said, yep.
Okay.
So, a little bit of, some bills come in for that.
All good. All right. And park and rec, we do not have a finance person to change the, we're taking forty thousand out of salary and putting it down to maintenance, but I don't know if anybody could do that right now. All right. I'm still, and I'm going to jump down to redemption of debt. I'm very intrigued by the general obligation bond. We paid ninety-four thousand, we budgeted sixty-one. I actually looked at, at the bills today. That just seems high, but it is what it is. Uh, so, I also, we'll look at this, and we should take, we should find happiness in this, but it's not real. Total expenses, we budgeted twenty thousand, eight forty-three. To date, we have incurred sixteen, five, two, six. Give us unspent funds of below four million. That's too high, but seems to be in the right direction. Any questions? I think we should celebrate that revenues is what I really wanted to do. And I do believe expenses are coming in low, so take comfort.
Can you go back to the general obligation? What is that?
I believe that's, tell me, you got to help me out. The last bond we issued, two thousand, twenty-four, five hundred thousand dollars. Five point seven five rate, fifteen years. If I went to do that math in my head, that would be two payments. Semi-annual? Two payments, thirty-five...
We have a chart of this. Every one of you has the chart on there. I will pull it up for us if I can find it. I just don't know how much it's, so poorly...
I don't know either. And I looked at the bill today.
Capital purchases, capital purchases you're talking about.
I don't know, that sounds, that just said ninety-four...
That was the last, that was the last bond that we, uh...
Yeah.
It was ten thirty-one, two thousand, twenty-three. Fifteen years, five hundred thousand.
Ninety-four, ninety-five thousand dollars a year, that's a...
That was five point seven five percent interest.
Semi-annual? Again, I...
And what's that one labeled, Tom, when it comes in, that's a bill?
I would have put that closer to...
Because that might be just something that I miscoded.
Ah, okay.
You know what I mean? The bills come in, and sometimes it'll just say clean water, and I have to figure out...
I do not do too hard, though. I looked at the bill today.
It's under, it should be under capital purchases.
When the bill comes in? Because maybe I just coded it wrong, and it should be up in the one that's like seventy-five percent spent.
And that was with dime back.
It's dime back.
Right.
All right, I will, I will look at, I will look at.
It's annual, I don't know, who seems to know. Twas you.
It seems like it should be closer to seventy-nine, I don't know.
Yeah, there's one principal, one principal payment and two interest payments.
Yeah.
So, we have, principal is like thirty-three thousand, three, 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 point, three, three. Um, and again...
They're showing that we set ninety-four.
Then that's for fifteen years. Okay, so we pay, uh, principal and interest, uh, interest only on February fifteenth, and then principal and interest on ten, on eight fifteen.
Thirty-three, and it's over fifteen years, you pay it back, just interest. Anyway, I do not, I just caught my, caught my attention. A little word about it.
So, this is reading that we, we paid it ninety-four thousand. Correct. That's why I'm thinking it got miscoded.
It looks like that, yes.
You know, put it in the wrong account.
I can't figure out why, but I'll work, I'll think about it. All right, folks, it is time. It is time to celebrate. The budget has passed. It is our responsibility to set the mill rate, to cover the expenditures the town has requested. We talked about a moment ago that WPCA is giving us about fifty-six thousand, and hopefully you are leaning in the direction that we can use that in other places. Let us live up, say aye, to the promise we made to citizens. We will lower the mill rate up point six, thirty-one point nine eight. Anyone, uh... I need a first and a second.
I think that we accept the mill rate that we have set at point six.
Additional thirty-one point nine eight, very good. Thank you, courage. Um, I remember when I was a young, like you were, and I would make the recommendation, and I thought, my God, you're recommending to hell to increase the mill rate. But anyway, thank you very much, your courage. All right, I got a first. Can I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor of increasing the mill rate by point six oh to a mill rate of thirty-one point nine eight, please say aye.
Aye.
There's both. It was upsetting. Thank you, everyone.
So, just a point of interest. What if we voted no? I mean, the town voted in a referendum to pass the budget, so we don't have a choice, really.
Uh, no, you could go down like, you could go down. I'm still intrigued that we could go up too, but I, I like the way you stare at it, you can't, but you've told. No, I agree with you. It's same with the, by the way, same with the German. What if we never heard? We'd sit here forever staring at you.
Yes.
Anyhow, all right. Other business become before this board?
Oh, I have one other thing.
Yes, yes.
All right. There's just, I mentioned it to Bud, and he said, yeah, just throw it out. So, basically, a few years back, when I was over at Park and Rec Department, we put in for a grant, and the town approved it. We were awarded the grant for a new concession stand, restroom at Plattwood. Also, a separate playground grant we got, and we also got a grant for a pavilion. But the pavilion, sorry, excuse me, the pavilion and the restroom and concessions, I believe, was one grant. The town at that time, when they accepted the grant, also made a promise to, our share was going to be a hundred thousand. So, at some point, we are going to have to, we've already put some money out towards that a hundred thousand in engineering fees, so it won't be a strict, I'll be coming to you for a hundred thousand. But just keep that in mind as we're going out to RFP for the concession stand and the restrooms. We had a lot of issues there with the well...
I want to jump on to, in our capital fund is fifty-five thousand dollars. Which means we have to come up with the other, I'm curious how that happened.
Yeah, when did that, didn't we put that money aside?
Fifty-five thousand was...
No, I mean, the hundred thousand we agreed to pay for.
I have fifty, in our capital fund, we put fifty-five...
Twenty-two, twenty-one. For next year, come on.
Twenty, 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 twenty-one.
Was there the assumption the town crew would do some of it?
Yeah, so, our share can be, I don't know if it can be labor, but it can maybe be labor. I'll look into that, if we can put in, if our, you know, our guys are doing some of the work, but any electrical, things like that, that we have to pay for, those, they can chip away towards the hundred thousand. But our share has to be a hundred thousand. But again, engineering fees can count towards that, design fees.
But the town, the town had to approve a certain dollar amount, and I'm not seeing it. I only have one source. I'm not seeing the town committed to that.
The town didn't commit to a hundred thousand?
I believe we did, to get the grant.
It'd be your town meeting, so we can check the records.
That's correct. We'll look at that, that's correct.
Well, Jacobson reminded me of the terms of the grant, so I assume at some point the town... I was not in this position, so, well, we were awarded the grant.
No, Catherine, we can go look at this.
Go look it up, but, so again, just kind of want to remind you that that work is...
How much was the grant for?
I think it was four hundred thousand.
Wasn't, wasn't, I'm, right, I'm blanking, but wasn't there an issue that, with the playground, that it was going to be X number of dollars, and then it went up?
Yes, so the playground grant, it was included the elementary school playground, as well as playground equipment at Devitt Field and at Plattwood. So, Devitt Field got quite a few new pieces. Playground at the elementary school was totally redone. Big kid playground and old kid playground. So, two playgrounds over there. And then Plattwood was going to get some new pieces, you know, new spring, swing set and some different pieces. But the climber out there was relatively new. I believe that was put in by Park and Rec in two thousand twelve or something, two thousand. I know the one at Devitt was put in in two thousand fifteen. So, we didn't have to replace the climber. So, again, just put some new pieces in, and that was all part of that one big grant. The elementary school ended up spending more than their share when we had divided it out, which I was not happy about. Only because I want a Park and Rec too. But very lovely playground, enjoyed by the youth of the community, so it's all fine. But I think that's what you're referring to. That went over a little bit, so then Plattwood is going to get a little less of what we initially had planned, but still some new pieces and...
So, Carol, I'm confused. How much money is left from the grant to go to Plattwood?
Um, well, the grant at Plattwood, playground pieces, I think there's about, I want to say forty to sixty thousand, something like that, but I don't know for sure what's left for the playground.
Is there one thing, some other grant?
The other grant is pavilion grant and restroom concessions. Not, I think that total is four hundred thousand.
I don't, I'm not going to say exactly.
Maybe it was three hundred thousand, and then the town was four hundred thousand, so we had four hundred something.
Carol, have we gotten the money? Have we gotten all the money?
No, no, it's all reimbursed when you...
Okay.
When you spend it.
So...
And was there a timeframe?
Yes.
It's all reimbursed, so we have to put the money out first.
Uh, I believe that's how it was set up, yes. But again, don't know. Let me look into it.
Probably the works, just cuts through our...
Let me revisit all that, because again, that happened before I was in the year, so I can't remember all the terms of it.
And the grant has expired, so we have to ask for this, don't you?
It has not expired yet, but it will expire if we don't get our act and get it done.
Okay. So, there's money we have to prepay before we get reimbursed, and then there's a portion of it that we just have to flat out pay.
That I will have to, as I said, I'll have to look into the terms again. I was not in a...
No, no, I understand.
Because you're trying to... I don't want to misanswer, you know, answering correctly.
We're trying to get our hands around, so there's a certain amount that we're going to want to spend probably this year in order to get reimbursed and also to pay for our share of the total. And we don't have that anywhere, is that correct? Bud, we don't have any money put aside for this, do we? That I know of.
Because it's such a big number, I'd like to, I'm catching, I'm thinking about it. I need to think about it. It's such a big number, I can't imagine, it just...
Look back at the minutes on it.
Yeah, look back and read...
And I look at the accounting, whether it's in a grant or capital or...
The roof of the elementary school. We put that money out, and we're still waiting for it.
Exactly.
I remember the playground stuff and the grant for that, but all the rest of it, I don't remember, like, the pavilion and a new concession stand and all that.
It was all lumped, lumped in together.
Yeah, it was two, and then it was, yeah, we lumped a lot of it together. And, you know, I don't know if there was a change at the state, but literally, like, two weeks ago, I got a letter, an email from the state, and I said, "Are we all set for this reimbursement?" She said, "I need all the invoices from the roofing company." Even though, I, I think we've already sent them that about four times. So, then I reached out to the roofing company, I said, "Give me everything to prove we gave you a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, because we need it, you know." So, she sent me everything, I sent it to the state, and I said, "Are we done?" "Yeah, well, Mick, is this finally it?" She said, "I'm trying to close this out for you." So, I'm thinking that up in the state, maybe, I don't know what happened. Like, the roof was put on in twenty twenty-one, and it's been four years, and they're now asking again for all the receipts that prove that we paid for the roof, you know, so... So, I'll have to figure out the whole grant thing for the playground, because it's been old, you know, it's been a while. But again, just wanted to make you all aware that if this is finally getting started, this is going to be something.
Okay, good. And that is clear. It was good. It should look. All right. Board of Finance, anyone wish to adjourn?
Well, can I just make one point?
You just made one.
I know, but I will look at it.
I keep making it true.
I won't get to see lovely people in the office, especially later, until the end of June, so... And by then, my son will be married, so I'll be there. Hey, you guys talked about the auditors coming into your next meeting.
Yes.
Right. So, I have all the copies in my office of the audit report.
Why do you think you gave them? Good.
No, they gave them to me, and I put them in the file in there. If people would like their copy before the meeting, I can send it to you, hard copy. Oh, did you already send the...
I sent, no, but let's give it to them. I sent them a copy.
Oh, so, you got a, you got a copy via email.
Yes, but let's give it to them.
So, you do have one on your computer's email, but if you want a hard copy, I have the bound one, and, okay. Otherwise, when they come in at the end of June, they'll hand it out, so don't lose your copy. Bring it back to that class.
Yes.
Because they won't bring probably more copies. They'll be like, "I already gave you it here," so...
Yeah.
So, technical, I'll make sure.
So, see me before you leave, we're in the office.
Perfect.
Did you need to set a town meeting to cover a couple of forms? Do we have to go through them?
Uh, no, but we are planning a town meeting. We have, two groups have come to us for the community action grant, is that what it's called?
Assistance.
Assistance grant. And again, they've come before, the foundation church was one, and Tri-Town Youth Services is another. So, how those work is the local government has to approve it, municipal, so that would be Board of Selectmen, and then it has to go to a town vote. Again, so the legislative body can vote to, basically, the town is supporting the two projects that these groups want to do. Like, one, the church wants to do upgrades to windows, insulation, that sort of thing. So, it looks like the last, how many years has that happened, right?
Has it all been wrong?
Seven, eight?
Yeah, so, so it's kind of a routine thing at this point, where we set up a town meeting.
Zero thousand.
So, that might be in June or something like that. I mean, I'll look at the dates and find a date that we all can make it. Because I know high school graduation's coming up on the eleventh, I believe, so...
Obviously not upstairs, I feel, but... All right, everyone, I need to...
One more thing, I don't...
Gotcha.
Carol, Dwayne, Katie and I have been going to the fire building committee meetings, and I wondered if you wanted an update on that at all.
Yes, yes.
It's, they're very organized. Each person on their committee has a specific area that they cover. Right now, everything is, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but everything is still on hold